Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzek?
Here.
Mr. Levens.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a time, by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just for all.
First order of business on our agenda is the resignation of Councilman Robert Levens.
It has been a great pleasure and honor to serve as a councilperson during this last several months on the Stone Harbor Borough Council. Therefore with regret, it is regret that I resign as of May 1st, 2019, from the Stone Harbor Borough Council. It has been a pleasure working with you and I appreciate all the assistance you have provided me during these past months. Sincerely, Robert Levens.
A move that we accept.
Second with regret. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
With regret.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzek?
Yes.
And by way of explanation, so everyone is aware of how that seat is going to be filled, it's a little different than what has happened in the past. And filling these seats is outlined in the election law statutes, which is, it's outlined in Title 19, state of New Jersey. So what happens is it was effective May 1st, so the vacancy became effective May 1st, so the Stone Harbor Regular Republican Committee has 15 days, it takes it to May 16th, to present council with three names to fill the seat until December 31st. Council, upon receipt of the three names, will have 15 days to appoint somebody. That person will be sworn in on June 4th. What is different about this procedure versus the last time when we had to fill on expired terms is this, the person filling the seat and getting this appointment is not going to make it to the primary because of the timing, they cannot be on the primary ballot. Since this individual will not be on the primary ballot, they will serve until December 31st. By September 12th, the Stone Harbor Regular Republican Committee has to provide the clerk with the name of the person who will assume the seat in January and will serve for two terms, I'm sorry, two years. That person's name will be on the ballot in November, in the January, November in the general election. So that, it could be the same person who assumes the seat June 4th, it could be a different person. Josie, you have that look on your face, it's a different procedure because we're missing the primary. And those persons on the ballot in November, in order to be on the ballot in November in a partisan election, you had to have been in the primary. So since this person cannot be on the ballot in the primary because they're not going to be named in time to be on the ballot, then what happens is the committee gives that name by September 12th and that person is on the ballot. Anybody on council having questions about that?
I have questions, but not now.
Well, you can ask them now.
No, because-
Because maybe the question you have, somebody out in the audience has the same question.
Well, I'll wait and see. I'm just confused, that's all.
Okay.
But that's-
Okay. That's the procedure as outlined. The clerk was asked to contact the county clerk's office and get the procedure. And the county clerk provided us with the procedure. And we have, it seems like we've been doing this a lot in the last, say, five years. And it is different because of the timing, because of the primary election timing. Do I have any communications?
No, ma'am.
We will now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the podium and stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Richard H. Heinlein Jr. and I'm a unit owner at the Sanderling, 9600 First Avenue. And Michelle DeLisandro had sent a letter to the mayor and council members back on March 18th. She was not able to make this meeting today, so she asked me to make some comments. And this in regards to the Reed's Shed. And I would like to state for the record that the Sanderling Condominium Association sent a letter on March 18th requesting a meeting with the mayor and borough council members to find a mutually beneficial spot for the Reed's Beach Shed. We understand that the initial bid for the shed issued in April was unsuccessful and that the bid was re-advertised and will be awarded tonight. We submit our letter and request for a meeting with the appropriate governing body. And would you like me to read the letter or submit it to, to you, the March 18th?
I'm sorry, the original letter?
The original letter.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. I know we get right into the record, sure.
Okay. Dear Honorable Mayor Davies Dunhour and the Borough Stone Harbor Council Members, as representatives of the Sanderling Condominium Board and their resident owners, we are seeking a planning decision, discussion with respect to the Reed's Beach Shed in advance of the 2019 beach season. Last season, the Reed's Beach Shed moved around a bit and we appreciate your consideration in attempting to mitigate residential feedback. However, the shed ended, ended the 2018 season located directly in the walkway of the 96th Street entrance. The shed was not off to the side, but directly on the walkway itself. She attached pictures, I don't have those pictures with me. Our goal is to work with you to seek a more favorable location considering the impact of the beach shed during 2018. The Sanderling Board and owners discussed the topic at length in their latest meeting and have authorized this letter. We are respectively confounded why the borough would place this shed at the busiest beach entrance, 96th Street. In this location, the highest concentration of beachgoers are greeted with an up-close experience of the shed and the dirty Reed's Beach laundry spilling onto the pathway, given that the dirty laundry doesn't go back in the shed, but rather gathers on the ground through the day. Certainly, this made the beach approach far less attractive than it should have been for a large concentration of locals and visitors. We suggest the borough should locate the shed off of 97th Street Beach Entrance next season. The Reed's always places their orange mushrooms between the 96th and 97th Street entrances, so this change would not relocate their guests, only the storage shed. Far fewer visitors would be subjected to the view of the shed at that location. And by shifting one street south to 97th Street, as opposed to one street north, 95th Street, it also helps ensure the best beach image and the highest beach brand for Stone Harbor. We ask you to please consider the following. 96th Street is the primary beach entrance with the public parking lot and a steady volume of folks who drive to the beach and are at either 95th or 96th. 96th Street has a high concentration of more than 100 owners within two blocks of the beach. Most, if not all, of these residents are occupied all summer long. The Women's Civic Club attracts hundreds of guests every summer, primarily wedding parties who stroll onto the beach at 96th Street. A number of weddings, wedding parties also take their wedding photos on the beach at 96th Street Entrance and the 96th Street Beach itself. In contrast, 97th Street has a lower concentration with only single-family homes and the park, tennis court between Third Avenue and the beach. The home on the northern corner is occupied only a couple weeks each season. There are high dunes in front of this house where a shed would be largely hidden from view. This location behind the high dunes is only about 90 degrees from the beach entrance, or 90 feet, I'm sorry, 90 feet from the beach entrance, strategically located to serve Reed's clientele on the 96th to 97th Street beach. Furthermore, the 97th Street location and high dunes would allow for an additional shed should the Reed's find it necessary. Traffic at 97th Street is very low, so this would be a special, more private and safer drop-off location for Reed's guests. The 97th Street Beach Entrance is a no-turn, straight drive from the expanded Reed's area. Please advise as to the next steps in arranging an alternative shed location and any associated planning discussion for such. We can attend an upcoming March or April meeting, either full committee or subcommittee venue at your direction. Thank you for your consideration, Michelle DeLisandro and David Hoag, and on behalf of all Sanderling Board members and owners additionally listed below on the letter. And I have a, a letter here I'd like to drop off or have you keep.
Okay, okay. Is it the March letter or is it one in addition?
There's only been one letter.
Okay, okay. I am in receipt of that.
Okay.
I did get that. We all, everybody on mayor and council, I believe, received that letter, correct? Excuse me?
It's the March one.
Yes, the March letter.
It's-
And it's my understanding that the administrator's office reached out, answered the letter, and advised that once the bid was awarded, that we would meet with representatives of the Sanderling on the site location.
Okay.
To physical, to meet on the, on the beach before the shed's placed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to address mayor and council?
Afternoon, everybody. My name is Frank Dahlahan, 378 95th Street, Stone Harbor. I came here this afternoon to address borough council on the matter of the construction project on 95th Street, where we have recently learned the curbs, gutters, and driveway aprons will have to be demolished and replaced. In my opinion, and the opinions of our neighbors on 95th Street, this is an incredible failure of the borough to properly manage and supervise a major construction project. And I say that again, it's a major failure on the part of the borough to properly manage and supervise a major construction project like this. The homeowners on 95th Street have had our patience and goodwill tested over the past few years. First, we had to deal and endure the Atlantic City Electric fiasco, where Atlantic City Electric wanted to replace the electric service to the borough without providing any factual explanation for the reasons to do so. Next, beginning in the fall of 2018, the replacement of the sewer and water pipes began. This project was on and off for some time and was followed by the construction project where the sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and driveway aprons destroyed and were damaged with the first construction job were to be replaced. Within the past few weeks, we learned that the job was not properly done and will have to be done over. Apparently, the curbs are approximately two inches higher than the sidewalks because the wrong benchmark measurements were used in the construction. This will result in improper drainage from the sidewalks to the street and will cause the sidewalks to flood. I'm sorry, I can't see. How something like this could happen is truly unbelievable and it is an example of gross incompetence on the part of the engineering firm, the contractor, and the borough. I believe the contractor was told the curbs, when, when the curbs were being poured, that they were too high. The contractor's reply was, "We're going according to the benchmark provided by the engineering firm." It was a who shot John. No one thought to double-check and verify the accuracy of the plan or the benchmarks. No, the work just continued. Where was the borough as this farce played out? Why do we find out only after the work has been completed that it was done improperly? Why doesn't the borough have an engineer inspect and verify the work that is being done, that it's being done correctly and to the proper standards, as it does with construction of new homes, from foundation inspections to final safety inspections? Additionally, it seems to me, the engineering firm responsible for establishing the standards should have the capability of stopping work on a job that is being done incorrectly. And by the way, they knew it was being done incorrectly when the first curbs were being poured at the corner of 95th and Sunset. They knew they were too high and they told the construction firm then that that was the case. If the engineering firm does not have the authority to stop work, which I understand they do not, surely the borough of Stone Harbor has the authority to do that. The contractor should have verified the measurements for the curb when advised they were too high. Or at the very least, he should have double-checked to make sure that he had the most current, up-to-date plans for the project. It is interesting to know, or to think about how somehow between 95th Street, the 300 block, and 95th Street on the 200 block, the correct measurements were obtained. How did that happen? In the meantime, residents of 95th Street will have to be, will have to contend with another construction project, more dust, more dirt, speeding cars, if you can believe it, with the, the number of cross-hatch dugouts that are on the street. It's a mess. I have several recommendations, not just complaints, to make in connection with this affair. Some come from John Strannix, a neighbor of ours, who's an engineer familiar with and experienced in major construction projects. His firm built Citizens Bank Park to prove his bona fides. I think, and we think, the other residents of the street think that the commercial traffic on the 300 block of 95th Street should be limited and flow only from Third Avenue to Fred's. And they should return the same way. They should not be able to continue down the street to Sunset and exit on Sunset to 96th Street. They should go back to Third Avenue, back out to 96th Street, and back over the bridge. This restriction, in my opinion, should be from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and with periodic police oversight to make sure that the limitation is observed. This is necessary to prevent truck traffic, in particularly, in particular, from speeding down on 95th Street to Sunset Drive. Today, for example, a small truck was coming in the other direction as I was pulling out of our driveway. And you cannot believe the speed at which this truck was flying down the street. It is, I mean, talk about danger. If there were children present, it would be potentially catastrophic. Small trucks are not the only problem. Large trucks and tractor trailers on the street cause serious vibrations that every resident has felt within their homes. You can tell when their truck is going by because there are vibrations in our home. I would point out to you, as John Strannix did in a letter to Jill, that those houses are not built on pilings, they're built on the ground. And vibrations can have a serious impact on the foundations. This can create a liability problem, not only for the borough, but for the contractors involved as well. John also recommended that seismographs be placed on the street to measure the vibrations so that there is a record of what the actual vibrations are as a protective measure for the borough and for the contractors. So that if the vibrations are within normal range, that is a, an excellent defense for the borough to use. In my opinion, the borough should be proactive, not reactive, to this situation. The borough's solicitor should review the contract with the engineering firm and the contractor to assure that the borough has, excuse me, that the borough has the authority to immediately stop work when it is informed that it's being improperly performed, regardless of any disagreement between the engineering firm and the contractor. Finally, the borough should be the communicator to the residents of the town to provide an explanation of what happened and why. The communication came, the only communication that we got came from Remington and Varnik, the engineers, was, I don't know if you saw it, but it was so poorly written and inadequate, it is, it's an embarrassment for that to go to the people who have been severely inconvenienced as a result of their mistake or the contractor's mistake. The contractor, contractors have no responsibility to the residents of Stone Harbor, of 95th Street. That responsibility rests squarely on the shoulders of the mayor, borough council, and the town administrator. Each of you is personally responsible, to each homeowner, to provide accurate information and a detailed plan of when the errors will be corrected, not Remington and Varnik, not the construction company. That is something that the officials of borough Stone Harbor should be required to do. You are the communicators to the residents, the people who elect you to office. It's not Remington and Varnik's responsibility to communicate. Mistakes like this should not occur and the present problem will take weeks to resolve. My final words are, what an incredible waste of time, energy, and money. And I ask you the question, where is the accountability for this mess? Thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention.
Can I?
Thank you, Frank.
Can I?
Sure.
Yes. Frank, up, up, I'm, I don't want to address your recommended traffic patterns because I have to think about that. But on everything else, I think you're 100% on the money. You have a good understanding of what happened there. Probably a better understanding than some people sitting up here on the dais has. You know, it goes back to the fact that we, you know, we contract out to licensed, qualified engineering firms to do this work for the borough. We don't have, and we, some of us have talked about it, I've talked to some of you about it, that maybe we should look at hiring a full-time engineer, that's expensive, but somebody who's going to look out only for the borough's interests and oversee the projects that are going on. Jill can't do it, I can't do it, you know? Public Works can't do it. They, I mean, they have a good idea, but I don't know that they have somebody who's eminently qualified to oversee projects like this. Because we have lots of them going on now. And it's extremely unfortunate what happened at 95th Street. You know, when I heard about this a couple weeks ago and I sat in that meeting with Jill, I, it was, you know, a lot of finger pointing going on. And, and I, I asked that question, why didn't somebody stop the work? Just, I mean, if there is some question, just stop it. Don't let it continue on. Then we get into legal ramifications because nobody wants to be liable for, well, wait a minute, we stopped Dahlahan Construction for four days and turns out they were right. Now Dahlahan Construction wants to get paid. That would have been cheaper still than what we're going to go through now. So, yeah, these are all things that have to be addressed and I'm sorry that it happened. It should not have happened, but it did.
Well, the key point, though, is what, what will be done to prevent it from happening at another time? Because in my, in my view, we have a, an engineer on retainer. And it would seem to me-
Yes.
-that part of the responsibility of that engineer's responsibilities would be to spot-check the work that is being done.
If he, if he's tasked to do that, and we, we didn't do that because, I mean, in this particular instance, we have two sets of engineering firms working for the borough. And, you know, RV was, is, has been doing the 95th Reconstruction Project. The engineer that we retain, we haven't mixed them, mixed him into that process. I mean, these are both qualified firms, licensed firms, you know? And we have to go back, the borough's got to go back and get the lessons learned on this and talk to the solicitor and involve him in it. And then going forward, take what steps, some of which you've already recommended, that we have to have a stop-work order authority in this to make, you know, to hopefully, I can't say it'll never happen again, but hopefully try to prevent it from happening again. So, I mean, that's, that's all I can tell you, Frank. I don't know what else to say, other than I'm sorry this happened.
There's not much else you can say. It's a, it's a mess and it's going to continue to be a mess for the next couple of weeks until this is all-
Well, the first thing we can do is try, is try to get a good tentative completion date and then have the borough communicate with the homeowners on 95th Street. This is, this is where we are and this is when we hope to be done, finally. I mean, we all wish it were done now, but it's, it's not.
Yes.
So, again, I'm, I'm sorry that happened.
Thank you for saying that.
Frank, my personal apologies to you because I have driven down that street, let's say, for the last two months and it never got any better. It's been like an obstacle course. It can't be doing any good for anybody's cars on those, on that street. The amazing part to me was when I learned that work continued after it was pointed out, that it was not up to spec and that it was going to have to be redone and demolished. That, to me, is lunacy. So I, that's the part that I think somebody's got to answer for.
Well, that's where the borough should have the ability to stop work. That's, I mean, my understanding, and I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, I'm not in the construction business, but I have been advised that, by construction people familiar with work like this, that if something is not being done correctly, you have the authority and the ability to stop work and make sure that the work is being done according to the proper plan.
Jill, may I ask?
And my understanding is that they were working on the wrong plan, which is how they got to two inches above the standard that was supposed to be used.
Was the borough notified?
That's how they got the correct plan for the 200 block.
Was the borough notified that we were?
Part of the problem here, if I can, can jump in, and I've been living in the battleground myself, which you know, I'm right in the middle of it as well. And I know you're not going to be crazy about this answer. Based on discussions between engineer, construction firms, so on and so forth, finger pointing, so on and so forth, possibility of litigation, a lot of what we can say right now to you is limited. The only thing that I can say to you is, it's, it's being discussed. But since it now involves possible litigation, we, as the governing body, we need to be prudent about what we say publicly now. And that's what I said. I know it's going to be like, okay, there they go again, going behind the closed door. However, when there, when there is a possibility of litigation and the borough itself being drawn into such litigation, it is just prudent for us to publicly not get very specific.
That's fine. Is there any disagreement among members of the council that a contract that the borough issues to a contractor, an engineering firm, has the ability for the borough to stop work, stop the work if it is not being done correctly?
I would think, my understanding is, we've got inspectors there, they stop the work and they are the borough when they stop that work, so yes.
Not from the borough, it's the engineering firm.
No, but they're us, they're representing us. So the only way that we could possibly do what you're saying is to have, like what Ray suggested, on the scene, a person who is a borough engineer employed by us 40 hours a week. So I see what you're saying. At this time, the way that it works logistically, that en- At this time, the way that it works logistically, that engineer's the borough, and they do have that. I understand what you're saying. Your answer is yes, correct?
Yes, we have the ability to stop it at any time.
Yes, we do. Who is the borough? Define the borough then. And the borough's got to be the ears and eyes on the project. Who's the ears and eyes on the project? The engineer. Making sense?
I'm not saying that it has to be a full-time employee checking every centimeter along the street, but a periodic spot check is certainly something that's well within the realm of the consulting engineer to look at it, to make sure, I mean, if, if some guy on the street looks at the curb and says, that looks awful high, and just an ordinary average citizen says it's high, that's enough, that's enough to say, hey, let's go back and check and make sure we have the right plan, and if it's not correct, stop work. And it's, you know, it's not, it's not.
The answer to your question is yes. The borough does have that authority to stop work. Yes.
So then the next step would be a spot check.
Yes.
The work that's being done. Not only, not only in 95th Street, but 92nd Street and wherever this work is.
Correct. The inspectors, yes.
Okay. I'd like to give each one of you a copy of my remarks.
And Jill has reached out to different professionals, shall we say, to see if some of those suggestions from John Stranix can be implemented. We are looking at that.
Yes. Do you have a schedule of when this is going to be done?
I don't think we have a definitive schedule now, Frank, but we'll try to get one together, the tentative completion date, and get it, like I said, get it, the borough will get it. I'm speaking for Jill, but the borough will get it to the residents of 95th Street. That's, I mean, that's kind of the least we can do is tell them. Hopefully, your misery's going to end, you know, by such and such a date.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Anyone else like to address mayor and council?
Hello, everyone. My name is Robin Casper, 8001 Second Avenue, and I wanted to address the issue of the snare traps at the point and why we are killing foxes.
Robin, may I ask you to bring your microphone down just a tad?
Sure.
Thank you.
Got it.
Sure. I wanted to address the issue of the snare traps at the point and why we are allowing foxes to be killed.
Loaded question. So we have an agreement with various organizations, that Stone Harbor Point is a conservation area. So we have agreements with different organizations to help us maintain that conservation area, and it is, it's got endangered species, threatened species, wildlife. And part of the conservation plan is predator control. So the goal of the predator control is just that, to control that predation so any of those species have a greater chance of thriving. So that's the goal and the manner in which to achieve that goal, part of it is the predation control. So I will be honest with you, when the snare trap first came to my attention, and it was mentioned two council meetings ago. I did bring it up, so it'll be three weeks at the last council meeting. Concerned me as well. It was news to me that snare traps are being used. Honestly, it was not news to me that predators are being trapped and euthanized. That was not news to me. News to me was the snare. So, all of that being said, we're going to continue to talk to those organizations that we have, what would you call it, like agreements, because it's more than agreement, people that work with, you know, with helping these species thrive, to see if there isn't a more humane way of handling this. And to be specific, tomorrow morning, nine o'clock in the morning, Jill and I are meeting with members of Fish and Wildlife. I believe it's both state and federal, correct?
Correct.
To address this, to see, we understand, we get it, we get the predation, the predatory, the predation control, we get all of that. But is there not a more humane way that we can do this?
Well, I disagree with the predatory control. I feel like we should let the ecosystem alone. And, and we already have pushed animals out of their homes by making our homes, and now we're deciding who lives and who dies. I feel like that's completely wrong. On top of the snare traps, which I don't think should be allowed to be in use anywhere, they're absolutely despicable. And I just feel like it's complete animal cruelty on, on any level. And they should be illegal. And I don't think that animals should be trapped and euthanized either because, again, we're interfering with where we don't belong.
I can't disagree with anything you're saying. However, Fish and Wildlife, there is certain regulations in place, federal laws, on how you handle conservation areas and how you handle endangered species and threatened species, and how you are going to put a plan in place to help them thrive. And right now, there's federal law that dictates how that goes. We must abide by those federal laws. What we're hoping to achieve is that we can, as far as what you're saying, the ecosystem, we wreak havoc on the ecosystem when we built our homes all here. We wreak havoc on the ecosystem, and as a result, all the, the wildlife is definitely suffering as a result, there's no doubt. We're, we'll be meeting tomorrow, we'll see if there isn't a better way. If I'm, I'm getting some information that there's things in other states that are working, maybe there's a better way. The best, we're going to start trying to see if there isn't.
Well, on top of the interference from us, I'm hearing also that the plover isn't even considered an endangered bird?
No, the piping plover's still on the endangered list. Still, no, the piping plover is definitely still on the endangered list. Yes.
It is?
Yes. Yes.
Well, aren't seagulls, though, more guilty of taking their eggs?
If you look at, Ryan, if you look at some of the, if you look at some of the information out there, yes, one, a main predator, a significant predator, is the laughing gulls. There's many predators out there. There is. I guess it's a lot easier to grab that one or two foxes than thousands of seagulls. And the evidence shows that it's the foxes because they see the tracks around the nest. And I am not, I'm giving you right now, I'm giving you simply facts. I'm not giving you my opinion. I'm just giving you facts. There is tracks around the nests that are identified as fox tracks, which is why they are focused on trapping the fox.
Well, I believe the fox has a right to be a fox. And I, I don't like to watch the nature shows. I turn the channel when the cougar comes up to the antelope. I don't like any of it, but I'm just really speaking out for the creatures and, and I don't think that there should be these efforts anywhere. I feel like human intervention is just wrong on this topic.
I hear you.
Thank you.
If I can, I just want to add, I didn't have the benefit, I guess it was two meetings ago of the work session, I had to come late, take my 15-month-old son to the doctor. But this news about the trapping of the fox, it is what it is, and it's, it's disturbing on two levels to me. First and foremost, to find out that this was taking place at the point and not having knowledge of this, and it coming to light via social media is really, really upsetting to me that this has not, we, we as council were not made aware, I have no idea, I don't, I still don't know how long this has been going on. So from an information standpoint, I would like to get some answers soon as to why we didn't know about this. I mean, I understand there's federal laws, but this is part of our community, and it's really, really disturbing to me that foxes were being snared on our land and no one ever decided that it was important to tell us as the governing body. So that's number one. Number two, I would just want to say, I'll do whatever it takes to comply with federal law in so much as we have to, but do so in any manner which is as humane as possible. And whether that, you know, first and foremost, if that, if there's some way to relocate these animals to a more proper or more appropriate environment, I think we should be doing that. So I just want to say that, you know, the community, I'm concerned on many levels, but to the community, you have my commitment to, to address this issue as appropriately as possible.
Hi. My name's Steve Bright, and I live in Massachusetts, but I'm here visiting your fine town. I would like if you could verify which of the six species that are talked about at the point in your meeting tomorrow, verify which of them are endangered and which of them are of least concern. Because there are many sources that are out of date and incorrect, going back to the 80s. So if you could just maybe be aware of which ones are actually endangered and which ones are not.
Okay. Definitely will.
Thank you.
Definitely will. Anyone else would like to address mayor and council? Seeing no one, I will close public comment. Ordinance 1546.
I move that ordinance 1546 be taken up on second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1546 on second reading?
Bond ordinance appropriating $5,395,8980 and authorizing the issuance of $4,841,181 bonds or notes of the Borough of Stone Harbor for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the borough.
The public hearing on ordinance 1546 is open. The public hearing is closed.
I move that 1546 be passed on second reading in advance to third and final reading.
Second. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1546 on third and final reading?
Bond ordinance appropriating $5,395,8980 and authorizing the issuance of $4,841,181 bonds or notes.
I move that ordinance 1546 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1547.
I move that ordinance 1547 be taken up on second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1547 on second reading?
Bond ordinance appropriating $4,753,175 and authorizing the issuance of $4,753,175 bonds or notes of the Borough of Stone Harbor for various water and sewer system improvements.
The public hearing on ordinance 1547 is open. The public hearing is closed.
I move that ordinance 1547 be passed on second reading in advance to third and final reading.
Second. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1547 on third and final reading?
Bond ordinance appropriating $4,753,175 and authorizing the issuance of $4,753,175,000 bonds or notes of the borough for various improvements for the water and sewer system.
I move that ordinance 1547 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1548.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1548 regarding operation of motor vehicles during flooding conditions be taken up on second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1548 on second reading?
Ordinance amending chapter five, 20 vehicles and traffic of the revised general ordinances.
The public hearing on ordinance 1548 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor, I offer that ordinance 1548 be passed on second reading in advance to third and final reading.
Second. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1548 on third and final reading?
Ordinance amending chapter five, 20 vehicles and traffic.
Madam Mayor, I offer ordinance 1548 to be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1549.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1549, or, I'm sorry, that ordinance 1549 be taken up on second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1549 on second reading?
Ordinance amending chapter five of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Stone Harbor, Regulation of Unmanned Aircraft.
The public hearing on ordinance 1549 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that 1549 be passed on second reading in advance to third and final reading.
Second. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1549 on third and final reading?
Regulation of Unmanned Aircraft.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1549 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-60.
I offer resolution 2019 S-60 for adoption.
Second.
This is a change order with Remington and Varnik regarding 95th Street.
Any discussion?
It's actually with RTW Construction.
And is that not Remington and Varnik?
No.
No.
Okay, with RTW instruction, construction.
No discussion. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-61.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2019 dash S dash 61 for adoption.
Second.
This is regarding lifeguard and beach tagger salaries.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-62.
I offer resolution 2019 S-62 for adoption.
Second.
This is for the EUS Powerhouse Field Hockey Sports Camp.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-63.
I offer resolution 2019 S-63 for adoption.
Second.
And this is for the EUS Exit Zero Lacrosse Camp, which is a lacrosse camp for girls.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-64.
I'd like to offer resolution 2019 S-64 for adoption.
Second.
This is refunding a security deposit for the recreation building.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.[1774.48] Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-64.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2019 S-64 for adoption.
Second.
This deals with the chapter 159 New Jersey DOT grant as it pertains to 88th Street.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Resolution 2000, oh, sorry.
Resolution 2019 S-64.
Yeah, yeah, are they all 64s?
Are they all 64s?
Yeah, there's like, it looks like there's three of them.
That last one should have been 64. There's four 64s in a row, the last one should have-
All right, so 64 is Recreation Building?
65 is the award-
DOT grant is 65. No, DOT grant's 65.
Yeah.
66, are we on right now? 2019 S-66.
Beach trans, right?
I think we're on 60.
Yes, 66.
Yep.
Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2019 dash S dash 66 for adoption.
Second.
This is the awarding of the, the beach storage shed to the reeds, which is a sold better amount of $17,000 for 2019.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-67.
Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2019 dash S dash 67 for adoption.
Second.
This is a $25 refund for a reinspection on a rental unit that wasn't needed.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-68.
Madam Council, I offer resolution 2019 dash S dash 68 for adoption.
Second.
This is a change order, and I don't have it in front of me, although I did read it earlier, now I can't find it.
She got it? Is that it?
That's not it. Yeah, this, this is a change order, increasing the contract amount of $97,284, and is to provide for the street bike rest stop improvements at 82nd Street and 94th Street, and it's the asphalt paving systems.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
I need a motion approving special event application received for the Stone Harbor Men's Sunday Softball League.
I'd be honored to offer that motion. It's a great group of guys.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll now take our exceptions to our plastics ordinance, one by one, and we'll call a roll on each one. So, this is a motion approving the hardship extension request by Wawa that will extend through December 31st, 2019, and it pertains to their coffee cup lids and their specialty beverage cups and lids. So I need that motion first.
You want a second?
No, I need a motion.
Motion? So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Are we going to, I'm sorry.